Five as well, looks like maybe we might have found it. We'll all watch that red bar. Five as well, looks like maybe we find it.
And also there's forty one.
Okay.
People left.
Okay.
We have.
We'll all watch that red bar.
How's it now?
Dr. Bailey, we're just gonna do a quick test here. Can you hear me fine? Okay, thank you. Looks like we're getting, looks like we're ready. Ms. Andrews?
Okay, I just want to let our public know that sorry that we are starting a little bit late. We have had some technical difficulties, but we are going to get started right now. Welcome everyone to the June twenty eighth Kirkwood School Board meeting. At this time, Mr. Frost, can you please lead us in saying the pledge?
Absolutely, yes.
Congratulations to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic of British States. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I call this meeting to order. Routine Matters two point oh one, Public Comments. At this time, I'd asked Dr. Ulrich to introduce Ms. Heinrich, Heidenreich, sorry, who will be reading our public comments.
Well, thank you very much, and I'm very excited to introduce to the board and our public the new Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, Ms. Laura Heidenreich. She joins us from the Francis Howe School District. We're very excited to have her. And one of her first official duties is she gets to let the board know if if there are in fact any public comments for this evening, and if there are, she will read those into the record. Ms. Heidenreich?
Yes, we have two comments from patrons this evening. The first one is from Heart to Heart Tutoring. Who we are. We represent a consortium of Kirkwood churches that have formed an organization called Heart to Heart Tutoring. We support low-income elementary and middle school children with an emphasis on reading skills for K through three. We formed to help close the achievement gap in our schools. We formed during the pandemic, so our initial efforts have been tutoring via Zoom. We realized that the achievement gap in our schools was not being closed and was widened during the pandemic. We are aware of the challenge of the reading achievement gap and how critical it is to get students on track by third grade. Our volunteer tutors want to be a part of the solution. Here is a quote from one of our tutors who worked with kindergarten students via Zoom. For years working with KSD, I heard so much about the achievement gap. Much it seemed like lots of talk and little action. Now that I'm retired, why not try to use my gifts for the teacher to help? When we began reading, when we began, excuse me, she was not reading yet and did not have any confidence about doing so. Now she is reading simple books with me and her family and has much more confidence to continue to work on her skills. I love my time with her and feel that I have done something to make this world a better place. What is our plan? We have met with Dr. Ulrich and Dr. Amber Phillips to create a face-to-face tutoring program plan for this fall. Our tutors will be trained by the district using the new literacy curriculum. The district will provide bus transportation to our initial tutoring site, the Lemmy Building in Meacham Park. We will have a means of communication with the district to help us understand individual student needs. We will measure the results to determine the reading level progress made by our students. How can KSD Board help support Dr. Ulrich and Dr. Amber Phillips with their efforts to make this program viable? From Nita Carrier, Heart to Heart Tutoring. We have another comment from Erie Bogerman, Jr. Questions for Kirkwood School Board. When will parents be free to be involved in school board meetings? I assumed that this was due to COVID, but learned that it was a policy in place pre-COVID. What are the objectives of the Equity Task Force for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two academic year? What materials or curriculum is being used? There are nearly sixty people on the Equity Task Force. How is the leadership structured and to whom are they accountable? How can parents be involved? When is the next meeting? I appreciate you including these questions in the meeting and meeting notes. Here is the fourth question. Please define the term equity in regards to the Kirkwood School District Equity Task Force. How is the Equity Task Force being compliant with Title IX disclaimer listed on their website? The devil's advocate may say they are attempting to fight racism with racism. The Kirkwood School District does not discriminate on the basis of sex, race, religion, age, national origin, handicap, or disability in admissions to or treatment or employment in its program and activity. Any person having inquiries concerning the district's compliance with the Title IX, Section five oh four for student issues, please contact Matt Bailey. For employee issues, please contact Howard Field. That's the end of the comments.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Mrs. Heidenreich, and welcome to Kirkwood. We're so glad that you have joined our team. Okay, moving on to two point oh two, Approval of the Agenda for June twenty eighth Regular Meeting. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for June twenty eighth?
Move, move, second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Boyko and seconded by Mr. Frost. All those in favor of approving the agenda for the June twenty eighth Regular Meeting, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes to approve the agenda. Okay, moving on to two point oh three, Awards and Honors. And at this time, I would ask Dr. Ulrich to introduce Ms. Dietrich, who will be sharing our awards and honors with us.
Yes, I have a double excited about the another announcement that we have, a new team member who has joined Kirkwood School District. Ms. Step Dietrich is our new Chief Communications Officer, and one of her first duties, and today is her first day on the job with us, and so one of the first things that she gets to do is celebrate or and alert us to the celebrations that we have in the district. Ms. Dietrich?
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here. So the Kirkwood, there's a Kirkwood High School student that was accepted into the Missouri Historical Society Teens Make History Academy. Kirkwood High School Rising Senior Sylvia Edwards is one of twenty-five students in the St. Louis area accepted into the Missouri Historical Society's Teens Make History Academy. Teens Make History is a nationally acclaimed paid program for high school students at MHS. Since two thousand and seven, TMH has helped teens develop professional skills, build confidence, cultivate relationships with mentors and peers from diverse backgrounds, and explore the complexities of history. The purpose of TMH is to provide high school students with meaningful work and give them a high level of ownership over projects that work towards the MHS mission and reach the broader community. During the four-week program, Sylvia will take part in a museum studies workshop, giving her a behind-the-scenes look at the world of museums. Sylvia will meet with MHS staff, conduct museum challenges, and complete a capstone project with teammates. Topics include archival research, oral history exhibits, public programs, and a museum theater. More than two hundred students from seventy-three high schools have completed the TMH Academy and over a hundred and thirty have worked as teen apprentices. Participants who successfully complete the TMH Academy receive a hundred and fifty dollars stipend and may apply for a long-term paid position as a teen apprentice that they can hold until they graduate high school. KSD elementary students take the top two spots in an area-wide book contest. Two teams of Kirkwood School District students took the top two spots in the annual Area-Wide Elementary School Book Battle in May. The Tillman Elementary School team won first place, and the Kaiser Elementary Team tied for second place. The teams compete virtually against thirteen area schools. The annual Area-Wide Elementary School Book Battle is coordinated by Confluence Academy, South City. The competition gives students the opportunity to meet and discuss current books of interest. The competition consists of sixty questions about ten different books. To prepare, the teams of third to fifth grade students read and discuss the books contained on the book battle list. Students are challenged to remember information about the plots, characters, and settings of the books. They also learn cooperation and dedication as they compete while representing their schools. For their victories, the teams each received a team trophy and each student received a bookmark and reading light. St. Louis Teacher Honored with the Twenty Twenty-One Loeb Prize for Excellence in Teaching Math, Science, and Mathematics. The St. Louis Science Center announced the finalist of the Twenty Twenty-One St. Louis Science Center and Carol B. and Jerome Loeb Prize for Excellence in Teaching Science and Mathematics. Night for Middle School Teacher Laura Showalter was announced as a runner-up. The finalists received their awards at a ceremony at the Science Center's Omnimax Theater. Community Relations and Development Office and Communications Committee members are presenting at the National Conference. The Kirkwood School District Communications Plan, developed by Kirkwood School District Communications Committee, was selected to present at the Annual National School Public Relations Association National Conference. The National Conference brings the best in school public relations professionals development to this annual event. This year, the event will be held in New Orleans. Presenters are Ginger Casey, Lisa Wade, Alyssa Taylor, and Daniel Hurt.
Thank you, Ms. Dietrich, and welcome to Kirkwood. We're excited that you have joined the Kirkwood School District. Okay, this brings us to three point oh one, the final report from Encompass Resolution. Before I turn the item over to Dr. Ulrich, I want to reassure the community that this entire process has been extremely independent. The board has not been involved in this work of Encompass Resolution. Tonight will be the first time the board receives the entire report. I, along with the rest of the board, am very anxious to hear the report and will be listening intently and will hold our questions and comments until the completion of the report. Dr. Ulrich?
Thank you very much, Ms. Andrews. And just to reiterate the independent nature of the report, going back, if you'll recall, it was about a year ago this time that allegations began to surface on the Kirkwood High School online Facebook page. And we reacted very swiftly, the board reacted very swiftly to authorize engaging a third party, and this is the culminating result of that. I want to make sure that everybody who is able to hear this knows that the safety of our students is always our highest priority. Our parents and our community have to be able to trust us with their kids. And we will follow up with the release to the public of the report. I want to make sure that I always say that we will follow all applicable laws and policies with regard to the release of that report, but also not only for that reason, but also for the survivors and the folks who have come forward and reported incidences to ensure that we protect them as well. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ann Malloy and Meredith Rund and give them the opportunity to present this information to the Board of Education. Ms. Malloy?
Thank you, Dr. Ulrich. I'm going to share my screen, hopefully successfully. And it does not look like I have permission to do that right now.
We will work on getting you that access just as quickly as we possibly can.
Okay. Okay. All right, can someone please tell me if my screen is sharing?
Yes, we can see it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it's the full screen and not a notes page, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you very much. We, we welcome the opportunity to be with you here this evening. As Dr. Ulrich has mentioned, we've prepared a written report for the board. We'll be delivering that this evening. We did want to share a high-level review of that information that we'll be presenting this evening. So for those of you who were present at the January Board Meeting, you might recognize us. I'm Ann Malloy. My colleague Meredith Rund is here with us tonight as well. We have another consultant who's worked on the project. We have a background in employment law and school law, as you can see on this slide. What we were asked to do is we were engaged in the independent assessment and investigation of culture and climate at the district, specifically that related to handling allegations of sexual abuse, misconduct, and inappropriate behavior. The board and the district outlined several goals for this project, which you see here on this slide. Four basic topics. The first was to identify whether there were unreported incidents of concerns of sexual abuse, misconduct, and sexually inappropriate behavior. Were incidents unreported? Was there a failure to take prompt appropriate action if they were? And that can be summarized as a question of, is there anything wrong with the system? Is the system broken? The second goal was to assess the familiarity with and the confidence in the reporting mechanism with current student, staff, and parents. We wanted to know if people understood how to report concerns and if they trusted that process. If they didn't, then why not? The third goal was to analyze what happened when complaints were made and substantiated and whether appropriate actions were taken and if supportive measures were offered to those who raised concerns. So that's, do we do the right thing in response to complaints? And finally, we wanted to, I just did that inadvertently. We wanted to identify strategies for moving forward. How can we do things better? How can we get the word out? So the initial steps we took, we were engaged in September. And the initial steps we took, as you all may be aware, the district, right away, when the social media accounts were emerging in July, created a report form. And in our report, we've referred to this as the KSD Report Form. That was something that was available and publicized on the website and also within the Facebook group where the the initial stories were emerging in July. So we took a look at those issues. We, we wanted to take a look at whether or not there were current concerns and if there were pending complaints and investigations. And what we learned is in that that time where the reporting mechanism was created, reports were coming in, and anything that was a current concern was being addressed by the district. We began assembling that information, evaluating information about historic complaints that were also being reported through that mechanism. We started to look at the policies that were in place and the processes that the district had in place to, to deal with these types of issues. Then we created and had a survey distributed to current high school and middle school staff, parents, and students. We created and established a phone line and our own separate reporting mechanism. In case people didn't want to communicate their concerns directly to the district, they could come to us. That information was distributed with the survey. It was also provided on various forums and social media. The reporting form, I think, is still, is still live on the, on the website. It's still an active forum, and various concerns were reported throughout this process. What we saw is those were, those were primarily historic events that were being reported. And as I mentioned, there was an investigation process already underway to address any current concerns that had emerged through that process. At this point, we started communicating with different stakeholders. And by stakeholders, I mean anyone involved in this process, whether it was a victim, a survivor, a witness to anything that had happened in the past, anything that was going on currently, staff members, parents. We started having communication with, with various members of the community that we would call stakeholders. And this is when we began gathering information about historical events and taking a look at the impact of those events on the current climate and culture. We also started looking at policies at that point. And as survey responses were coming in, we took a look at those as well. We did do a preliminary report in January of this year, and we focused on those, those two goals, identified goals two and four, taking a look at whether people knew about policies and knew about reporting mechanisms in the current population. We also evaluated policies as we were, as we were engaged in this process. And the key policies that these issues touch on are listed here in the slide. Sometimes it looks like a bit of alphabet soup, but there is, there is a logic to it. Our assessment was and, and is that the policies in the Kirkwood School District are sound and they're consistent with other Missouri public school districts. In the January session, we learned, we, we learned in January that in the February board meeting, the board was adopting Policy ACA, which is in some ways an extension of Policy AC, which prohibits discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. Policy ACA deals specifically with sexual harassment under Title IX. And Title IX is a federal law. And there were some recent updates and regulations that were updated in the last half of twenty twenty. And Board Policy ACA was adopted in line with, with those regulatory changes. It's my understanding that at this board meeting, there are some additional changes that are, that are being approved by the board. And they are ensuring that the district is up to date with the current regulations and that those are reflected within the policy language. When we took a look at the survey, we, we asked questions about different things. We looked at demographics. We asked if people knew how to find policies, if they knew how they were distributed, if the topics covered within policies were clear. We asked if people knew if there was a Title IX coordinator and who that was. And we asked for some narrative responses from people about their own experiences. In terms of familiarity with policy, staff members receive regular training about policies. They indicated that they were familiar with that. Despite that, they weren't sure who the Title IX coordinator was, so we identified some, some gaps there that can be filled. Parent-student responses were similar. And the survey responses primarily indicated a need to better communicate our policies with our, with our students. In terms of confidence of reporting concerns, parents expressed a confidence in bringing concerns forward and a willingness to do so. Middle school staff also had a high degree of comfort. High school staff was less comfortable. High school staff had expressed a greater degree of discomfort with bringing these types of concerns forward. And that seemed to be above and beyond the normal levels of discomfort that anyone has in raising a sensitive topic or a sensitive concern. And high school students were more uncomfortable than some other groups. Both high school and middle school students expressed a desire for a little more information about these policies. And they had similar concerns about reporting. And some of those are summarized on this slide, and they're also contained in the report. We spoke about these in a bit more detail in January, but just to review this, students don't have as great of an awareness of policies. They're probably not online looking for policies or looking at handbooks very frequently. But many students weren't sure where to find policies. So we identified some areas where we can, we can do a better job there. What was, that doesn't strike us as unusual because unless they've had a problem, they're probably not looking for the policy. What we found was more striking was a level of trust that seemed to be missing. Again, this, there are inherent difficulties with, with reporting these types of concerns, and we don't, we don't find that necessarily unusual. But students did talk about wondering if concerns would be taken seriously, thinking that maybe they wouldn't be. Some had some specific experiences with, with students where they felt like their concerns weren't fully addressed. There were remarks about perceived favoritism. If someone was less popular or not a favorite student, they might be less likely to be believed. And some raised concerns that male decision makers might favor male staff over, over a student, particularly a female student. And some, some students were aware of concerns that had been elevated by this point and were in the media about accusations of failures to act in the past. And that did impact their willingness, what they suggested would be their willingness to bring issues forward if things happen to them. The key concerns that emerged in staff surveys were these. The reputation of the district and various individuals emerged as something that staff members impacted, the impact that it had on them. They expressed some concerns about protection of particular people and the reputation of the community and the school district as a whole. There were references made to the Kirkwood Way. And there were references made about who you know, who your connections were in the community. People talked about the Boys Club. Staff members also had some perceptions of past failures to fully address and adequately address concerns that had been raised previously. The high school staff in particular expressed an interest in having an outside resource take a look at concerns of this nature. Parents' concerns were similar to staff concerns, and we all, we saw again what I would call a legacy of distrust among certain families where they were long-term Kirkwood families, and if something negative had happened or they did not feel their situation had been taken seriously or addressed, that, that was transferred down generations. So when we went beyond the policies and the surveys, we started looking into reported concerns. And this is what we took a look at. And there were various resources that we used to determine what concerns were out there. We reviewed hundreds of pages of social media posts and traditional media stories. The district, as I mentioned, provided us full access to the KSD Report Form that they established in July. We created our own report form and a phone line that came directly to us. And we obtained feedback from hundreds of folks and stakeholders. Again, I mean alumni, students, parents, parents of former students in the form of survey responses. And if we count on And if we count all survey responses, we probably have thousands of folks giving us feedback. And we also conducted individual interviews and we had other direct contact over over email. And I want to acknowledge that these these conversations and the subject matter touches on on very difficult topics. And we want to thank those who shared their experiences with us, whether that was in written communication or in speaking to us and whether they spoke of their own experiences or their observations about the experiences of others. And we're especially grateful to the survivors who who trusted us with their very personal and painful stories. When we accumulated all of that information that I've just described, we were able to identify thirty accused staff members that we examined. And I do want to note that not every report that was received had enough detail in it for sufficient follow-up. Quite a number of reports were made anonymously, and there was sparse detail in many cases. We, we took a look at thirty accused staff members. This spanned five decades. And I have the distribution of decades there on the slide. What we found was that of those thirty, prior to the summer of 2020, when when reports started coming in through various means, fourteen of those staff members had had reports made about them historically. So the next steps we took, we requested and reviewed approximately forty individual employment files. Obviously, not all of these were of accused staff members, but of folks who might have been tangential or witnesses. For for one reason or another, we wanted to take a look at a larger group. And we also looked at HR investigation files. And we looked at the full set of investigation files over twelve years. We went back twelve years. And that would include files, a total set, including matters that were unrelated to sexual abuse or misconduct. And I do want to emphasize our role. And, oh, and in, sorry, in addition to the the twelve years of the full set of investigations, we also requested specific investigation files related to specific accused staff members. And our role here was not to reinvestigate. It was not to re-look at that, but to actually review the file and see if there was an investigation file. And if there was, we looked at the district's process during the investigation. So we have some observations about that process. And the first is that this covers a vast time span. And I think it's important to note that public awareness has increased through the years. There, anything from, you know, in the early 2000s, the Boston Diocese sex scandal, other high-profile cases that impact public awareness since the seventies, which is as far back as as some of these concerns go to. There are, there are reasons that people don't report these types of concerns. And some of the reasons that we heard was, well, it just wasn't done. You didn't complain about an authority figure. The teacher was popular. I just didn't know what to do. And I pulled a quote off of the alumni Facebook page that I think addresses this that I'd like to to read to you. And this is written by the brother of one of the affected students. "There are many reasons the victims of abuse, particularly children, do not speak out for decades. Being disbelieved, being derided, being accused of causing the abuse, being accused of being disloyal to one's family or school or church or community, the risk of stigmatization as long as they live there, and at times the perceived threat of retribution from the perpetrator himself or herself are more than enough to provoke silence. If you do not realize this, you have likely never been physically or sexually abused." And again, I do want to thank those who shared their stories with us. And I do want to acknowledge that there are reasons for not contemporaneously reporting concerns. It's also important to factor in what we have heard expressed by staff about their concerns about reporting. And in our recommendations, we would note that not only students, but staff must feel supported and able to bring concerns of this nature forward. We have some observations in the report about staff member comments about bringing concerns forward. And I will let, I will let that speak for itself. As far as investigations themselves, and again, this goes back over time. But we heard from, we we spoke with former HR administrators who told us they hadn't received any formal or specialized training in investigation methods or investigative best practices. They had not either had specialized training relevant to sexual misconduct or abuse allegations and really learned on the job, kind of situational learning, so to speak. Folks in central office, HR administrators conducted these investigations. And building principals and other building-level administrators either investigated or assisted in investigating accusations of sexual misconduct as well. And we would have similar concerns about the adequacy of that training. And it's a specialized area. It's not an easy thing to do. It might seem logical, but there are, there are specific ways where in which these these types of situations should be investigated, there are best practices for doing so. We saw there were inconsistencies in methodology in different investigations and inconsistencies in a way that the finder of fact reached conclusions also in documenting. Some investigation files were expansive and thorough. Others were were quite sparse. We noticed that in in some cases, there was an emphasis on determining whether unlawful conduct took place and criminally unlawful in particular, rather than analyzing whether or not board policies were violated. Some investigations appeared to be incomplete. They were initiated but abandoned when the accused staff member resigned or was at some stage separated from employment. And in some instances, there seemed to be a lack of curiosity about what was actually going on in the school. More than one investigative file suggested that the investigation may have been discontinued after a Kirkwood Police Department investigation was initiated. We noticed there was inconsistency in terms of documentation and formal notice given to staff members, faculty in in particular, that is required by the Missouri Teacher Tenure Act in order to move forward to termination. Either that or those documents were not maintained in employment files where we believe they should be. Finally, we had some concerns about bias in investigations. And former HR administrators had observations about certain high school administrators and teachers who did not seem to be held to the same scrutiny as others. And there was a belief that they were treated more favorably. And there was a record-keeping issue as well at several levels. And in some cases, we we found that there were documents that we believed existed, but they weren't in the file. And there was some suggestion that some documents might have been retained in former superintendent's offices. We're not certain about that. And other record-keeping issues and observations. Investigation files have been maintained by school year historically in most cases, and they're kept in hard copy rather than electronically. That's, that's not unusual in a in an organization. But but many have transitioned to electronic record-keeping, and that would be something we would recommend. And in terms of maintaining investigation files by school years, and some of those school years had indexes that would list the files by the names of the accused. There were some inconsistencies we found even within that system. When we received a file, what was in the file didn't necessarily reflect what was on the index. And we understand that that could just be simple filing issue, and that is understandable. But at the same time, that raises concerns because that system makes it difficult to track the frequency of concerns that are brought. And if there are multiple concerns brought against the same staff member, that is more difficult to track. It also raises concerns about, you know, if if one person is the keeper of that knowledge and it's not recorded in a documented fashion, you know, what happens if that person retires or is is otherwise unavailable to the district? And official investigation files are kept in a central location, but it would appear that from from what we heard from from former HR administrators, that building-level administrators may have kept separate files and separate notes, and that those weren't all combined. Those weren't all systematically retained in the same place. And again, that that system makes it virtually impossible to analyze and understand the historical landscape and to track policy violations on an individual basis. And we, we would find that, but that's problematic. All of this has an impact certainly on the current culture and climate. The concerns that were expressed by staff again are rise to the top at some of our our highest level of concern. And supportive measures in terms of what is done to support the person who elevates the concern, the reporter, whether that is a staff member, a parent, or a student. Certainly, the parent is outside of the school, and they have different, different needs. Students, there's, there's a power imbalance between a student and an adult. There may be power imbalances felt between a staff member reporting someone who's in a position above them. So the whole concept of supportive measures is one that has evolved over time, and we recognize that. But we would recommend that the district ensures that folks who have raised concerns are not going to incur any negative consequence for doing so. And there's a, there's a tricky balance between communicating about concerns that are raised. There are personnel issues involved. But for the majority of the matters that we reviewed, it really was unclear from the file whether any sort of supportive measures were offered to the affected parties. And there were some comments we we included in our report that came from students who were aware of a concern that was elevated and then said, you know, no one ever talked about it again. And they they didn't know how to think about it and what to do about it. All of these issues, to the extent that they're they're known by folks, and they they echo the information that we received in surveys, and they do lend themselves to a generalized distrust of some of of the district on these issues. And and I think I've mentioned the general generational legacy previously. In January, we talked about, you know, where do we go from here? What are some strategies to improve and to promote a positive climate and culture? We want to revisit some of those. The district has taken measures, has taken steps since January. And I mentioned the ACA policy being adopted. And students receive training through safe schools. Students grade six through twelve had online sexual abuse training. And those were designed to be trauma-informed and developmentally appropriate. Some of the topics covered in the content are listed here on this slide. And I think it's important to note that counselors were available to students in person and virtually during this process. The district has also undertaken training measures directed at staff at various levels. So key staff with specific roles in the Title IX process, investigator, decision-maker, and appeals officer have attended or have been scheduled, the majority have have attended live training on those topics and the very, the very detailed specifics that are required under the new regulations. And the retreat that was held in June for administrators, and that includes building principals, assistant principals, and director-level folks, included quite a focus on the relevant policies that are listed there that are the ones we discussed earlier in the presentation and then some extras. And there is, all all administrators, building level and in central office, have been scheduled for live Title IX investigation training in August. And at the August retreat, a deeper dive into policies and concepts related to Title IX and the policies at the June retreat will be, will be emphasized. Live staff for training is underway, is my understanding, and as planned for the upcoming twenty-one, sorry, yes, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That's in addition to the online training that staff members identify that they annually attend. This is extra. So going forward, we do have some recommendations. They're noted in the report. And I will briefly go through these here. We do believe that creating a dedicated tab or a dedicated page for Title IX issues, a dedicated section on the website would be useful. And there have been improvements made to the website throughout the last school year. It's much easier to find policies. And I will, I will say, policies were easier to find on your website than on other school districts that I've worked with than their websites even before we started this process, because I had a look back in the summer. And we do think it's important to update handbooks in a relevant way and make sure that students understand what's already included in the staff handbook, which is policy GBH about boundaries and inappropriate appropriate conduct between staff and students. And we've all gotten very used to everything being online and accessible electronically. You may want to consider a hard copy distribution of some of these policies at the beginning of the year. I would imagine students and parents saying they're not sure if they got a handbook. They would be able to get online and find it, but they don't remember that it's there. And if it's physical, that might have a stronger impact. And we do recommend continuing the investigation training that's already been started beyond the Title IX investigation training. There are other types of training out there. Not everything is a Title IX issue, but for folks who are responsible for investigations. You know, we attend CLEs every year. We continue our, our areas of specialization. And this, it's, it's a complex area. And we would encourage the folks who are involved in investigations to get support and to continue their training in that areas, in that area. We would ask you to consider outsourcing investigations of concerns brought against administrators and also the very tricky kinds of investigations that involve sexual misconduct. Kinds of investigations that involve sexual misconduct and sexual abuse. As far as record keeping, an electronic filing system would be an improvement. For obvious reasons and. You might consider. An HR manual that outlines specific investigation processes and procedures. And some of that is part of the Title IX component, but again, not every investigation that will be initiated is going to be a Title IX investigation, and so there. Should be a parallel set of procedures, flow charts. Policies and and. And there's a word that is not popping into my head, but checklist, I think is the word I'm looking for. And that can be for building level administrators too, I think that would, that would be very useful for them. So that. Is a high level view of what we have in our report and we want to thank everyone who has been involved in this process for. The experience that we've had with the district.
At this time, I just, on behalf of the board, you know, I would like to to thank Encompass Resolution for your research and work. While what we've heard tonight is difficult and disappointing. I, along with the board and Dr. Ulrich, want to assure, assure the survivors, our students. Staff, families, community, and alumni that we take this report very seriously. It is our expectation that Dr. Ulrich worked with his team to implement all the recommendations that Encompass Resolution's made here tonight. It's my hope that tonight begins a healing process. And a new chapter in changing our culture and providing students and staff. With the resources so that they are empowered to report any behavior that makes them feel uncomfortable. Schools should be a safe place for every student. At at this time, board members, I am going to give you the opportunity to. Ask any further questions. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Ms. President, so I don't know who's appropriate, the right person, Ms. Ron or Ms. Malloy, I did know Ms. Ron had quite a. Extensive background investigations, but. I thought I'd heard you say that when it comes to sexual misconduct, your recommendation is that those investigations are outsourced, so. Kind of two questions, number one, are you recommending that 100%. Of sexual misconduct allegations are outsourced for investigation, and then my follow up question to that is. What is the a realistic best practice in terms of a timeline? Or a an appropriate amount of time to. Expect closure. On that investigation with some type of formal closeout remediation. Thank you.
In terms of outsourcing, that's a recommendation. And every, every situation is different, every, every fact scenario is different. Availability sometimes is factors into things that there. There's a wide array of factors that that contribute to this, I believe your policy has some guidelines as far as timing. Of of current concerns. And again, that's a scenario where. Based on the specific facts of of each individual situation, the. Answers may vary, Meredith, if you have anything else to add to that. Kind of general idea, feel free to.
The only thing that I would add would be in response to your concern about 100% of these being. Essentially outsourced to a to a third party with that kind of experience, I think that until. You have staff. Who are. In charge of doing something like that, until that training is provided, I think at least for a transitional period that makes sense. Obviously, there are financial concerns associated with outsourcing. Everything, so. You know, as long as you feel comfortable that your staff has the appropriate. Training and has obtained that kind of specialized education, I think that. You know, not outsourcing all of those types of things. It would be would be recommended, we could recommend that. You know, appropriate folks handling those, you could keep it in house. If that was in place, does that answer your question?
Kind of, I think what you're saying is there's probably a sliding scale depending upon what district you're in. Where your personnel is, your training, and if you have the bandwidth, so let me ask it a different way. What is a realistic expectation? In terms of time for closeout investigations? And 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 does that help you work backwards to find out where that answer is, so? As I look at Kirkwood School District, it would seem to me that we would be on an extreme end of that. Scale given this report. And that we may look into outsourcing a significant amount. Going forward until we have training and bandwidth. An appropriate amount of time, I mean, I would assume investigations are not meant to take. An order amount of time.
Yeah, and. Again. You know, the the lawyer's answer is always, it depends, but it's. There, there is a lot of fact specific. Fact specificity that enters into that type of an assessment. I I would, I would echo what Meredith said, and I know, I know. Key people within the district now have had very specific training. In relation to these types of investigations, so I think at at each step you you assess the situation. How? You know, who has been, who who's accused of wrongdoing? What the allegations are. When they happened, those, those all factor in to these types of assessments, it's. In some ways, it's hard to speak in generalities because each situation has its own set of facts.
We'll continue to, Meredith, on that as we move forward, thanks.
Okay. Dr. Ulrich, do you, I don't see any further comments from board members, do you have any? Anything? Any comment?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Andrews, one of the things I want to make sure that that I point out, yes, thank you again, Ms. Malloy, Ms. Ron, for the work that you did. Couple of things that I want to point out is, I appreciate you highlighting the fact that there are several steps where we didn't wait for a final report. Where in fact, we worked to implement recommendations from the preliminary report in January. I thank you for that, however, it is clear. Based on what we have now seen in terms of the PowerPoint. It is clear that we have a lot to review. As a team, I can assure the board that it is my commitment to go back and. Where appropriate and where it has been pointed out by Ms. Malloy and her work. Where appropriate, we will go back and. And take a look at the the steps that were taken and clarify and rectify those steps. As appropriate, including if where where necessary, engaging a neutral third party to help us with that work. For our public, for the Board of Education, just as a reminder, Ms. Malloy has. Has referred to a report, that report will be made in full public. On our website for folks to reference. The board will have the opportunity in closed session to review that. However, I want to assure the the independent nature of this report, that full report. That has been provided to the board will be available to our public, we believe that that is a reasonable expectation. With regard to the work that has been done. So with that, I'll turn it over back over to you, Ms. Andrews.
Again, I just, you know, want to to thank Encompass and thank Dr. Ulrich and his team. For implementing these things and in taking the stance that you will continue to work. On this, so. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to three point oh two. North Kirkwood Middle School easement, Dr. Ulrich.
Yes, thank you once again, Ms. Malloy, Ms. Ron, if you'd like to drop off at this point, I will alert you when it's time to join our closed session. Later on this evening. So the next thing that we need to cover in our superintendent headboard reports, both of them are, I'll turn over to Mr. Mike Rome. One of these is actually an action item for a little bit later in the meeting, and the other is just an update. With regard to our progress specifically regarding a prop bar. So, Mr. Rome.
Thank you and good evening, everyone, first, I'd like to talk about the easement in front of North Kirkwood Middle School, this is a MoDOT easement. MoDOT is planning to resurface Manchester Road from Highway 270 all the way to Kirkwood Road. And in addition to resurfacing Manchester Road, they're planning to construct curbs, gutters. Entrances and replace some of the sidewalks. And so the plan is to replace a portion of the sidewalk in front of North Kirkwood Middle School. And in order to do that, MoDOT needs a permanent and temporary easement for that section of sidewalk along Manchester Road. So the permanent easement, it's a sidewalk and signal easement. For the purposes sidewalk upgrades along Manchester Road, the permanent easement. Is 192 feet by 15 feet. MoDOT is willing to pay us $27,363 for this permanent easement. And as I stated, this will include new sidewalks, 192 feet of new sidewalk. MoDOT will maintain this sidewalk going forward. They are also planning on replacing the concrete entrance in front of North Kirkwood Middle School, which is in very poor condition. The temporary easement is alongside the permanent easement, so this is a temporary construction easement, it's about. An additional six feet wide along the stretch, 192 feet. MoDOT will pay $4,747 for this temporary easement. Both these easements will have no functional effect on our continued use of the property. The easement documents have been reviewed by our attorney. The value of the easements were determined by Pody, Total Valuation Services. And in addition to receiving board approval, MoDOT requires the Board of Education to direct the board president to sign the easement documents. So I will be recommending that the board approve the easement documents. And that they direct the board president to sign the documents.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rome, Ms. Andrews.
Okay, more fit this time, do do we have any questions on this matter? Mr. Ross, sorry.
Thank you, just really quickly, thanks, President, Mike, this this does not include turn lane, this is only existing. Things that are set up currently, right, this is not an addition to anything, is it?
That's correct, there is no turn lane that is being planned in front of North Middle.
Thank you.
Any, any further? Okay. Ms. Pinkhorn.
Yeah, I do have one question, Mike, do you know if they're improving some of the crosswalks across Manchester Road to align with some of our. Walkability issues to the middle school?
Yes, they are doing work on the other side of Manchester, so it will include an ADA crosswalk and accessibility across Manchester Road. There's also plans for that whole stretch along in front of our school along Manchester Road. To really widen the path for pedestrians and bikes.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Sherman? And Mike, do we have a, do they have an estimated like timeline of when it would occur, we. Start this summer so that it wouldn't affect the traffic flow during school or. We have any idea? Take place on our side?
It's supposed to start either next spring or next summer. I believe the, it could take as long as two years. That that the entire project can take as long as two years. The work in front of North Middle won't take that long, especially whether it'll be replacing the sidewalks, that won't take that long. One thing that they are planning to do that entrance, it's concrete now, the plan is to put asphalt in that area. And the one of the reasons for that is we'll have access to that entrance on the same day. So that's one of the benefits, they have an asphalt versus concrete. But they did not give me a timeframe of how long they will be working in front of North Middle.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to. Westchester question, okay.
All right, thank you, and Mr. Rome, again, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, currently, Westchester needs six classrooms for first grade based on the number of students that have already enrolled in first grade. And they're really close to needing seven classrooms for first grade. If that happens, they will be short two classrooms. The Prop Bar plans included adding two classrooms in the front of the building plus additional classrooms in the back of the building, but as you know, that that project will take two years to complete. So we didn't want to wait two years, they really need these two classrooms, we explored several temporary solutions, which I I listed all of those. None, none of those temporary solutions are good solutions. Or and none of them meet the educational needs of our kids. We also explored adding modular classrooms. As another temporary solution, but the modular classrooms are expensive, you have to run full utilities to the classroom, including sewer lines, water lines, electric. They have to be secured to a foundation or anchors or piers. They also have to be at least 25 feet away from the existing building, which creates a safety and security. Concern because students and staff have to leave the building to get back and forth to class. So after meeting with the Westchester's Design Committee, the architects, our construction management firm. What we want to do is to to bid out these two classroom additions as as fast as we can, design them and bid them as fast as we can. With the goal of completing the construction by this coming January, so. That's the goal, we think we can reach it, that means that for the first semester of this coming school year. They will likely have to have art and music on a cart because those classrooms will be used as general grade level classrooms. Once the construction is is complete. Then these classrooms, one will become an art classroom, one will become a music classroom. And then when all the construction is completed in two years, then then these two new classrooms will become art, just art classrooms. Preliminary work has already begun, we've done a survey, we've done soil testing, we met with the city of Kirkwood to explain what we're planning on doing. So we're, we're moving along, the plan is to put it out to bid soon and bring something back to the Board. Of Education for approval in August. One thing I do want to point out, and I included the preliminary conceptual plan. The two classrooms shown in the front. Have been shifted to the north end of the school, they were previously further south in front of two existing classrooms. But the reason why we decided to shift it was really, there's two reasons, one is is. Putting them in that previous location. Would have caused loss of windows and natural lighting for. would have caused loss of windows and natural lighting for the adjoining classrooms. But also the the survey, the land survey revealed a lot of utilities under that that area. So for those reasons, we are planning to move it shifted to the north. There any questions?
Okay, looks like there are no questions. Okay, moving on to four point oh two consent agenda. Do I have a motion in a second to approve the consent consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Kavanaugh and seconded by Ms. Pangborn. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed? Motion to approve the consent agenda passes. Next up, five point oh one, financial reports and budget amendments for period eleven, which is May twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Dr. Albert.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Andrews, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Romey for our financial reports.
Thank you. Our revenues and operating revenues in May were just over two million dollars. One thing I do want to point out is is the current collection rate for taxes. It's it's low for the month of May. That's because the property taxes that are paid under protests were not released until early June. So in the previous year, they were released in May. This year, they were released in June. And that information will be reported when we present the June financials. But with that June payment, we're just above ninety-seven percent collection rate and we budgeted ninety-seven percent. So that's good news. Operating expenditures for May were six point seven million dollars. Most of that is salaries and benefits. There is nothing unusual or any large expenditures for the month. Maintenance fund included four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in lease proceeds for the boiler replacement project. That's the final reimbursement for the boiler project and the total lease proceeds came to one point seven million dollars. In our construction fund, this is a new fund that was set up to track the proceeds from the Prop Bar bond sales and construction expenditures. We sold the bonds through a competitive sale. Bank of America Merrill Lynch won the bid. They were required to send us a good faith deposit in the amount of one point one million dollars. So that was received in May. It's reflected in the financial statements. The the bonds actually closed on June first, so the rest of the proceeds were received in the month of June. Revenue amendments in May totaled sixty-one million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. This is the gross proceeds from Prop R. After the bond issuance fees, the net proceeds came to sixty-one point three million dollars. The expenditure amendments for May totaled three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. This is the Prop Bar bond issuance fees. There were other transfers made to accommodate expenditure requests, but they did not increase the budget. It's recommended that the budget amendments for May be approved.
Okay, at this time, do I have a motion in a second to approve the financial reports and budget amendments for period eleven? May twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Okay, so it was made by Mr. Frost and seconded by Mr. Boyko. At this time, board members, do we have any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the financial reports and budget amendments for period eleven? On May twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed? Motion to approve the financial report and budget amendments for period eleven passes. Okay, moving on to new business. The budget, okay. So the board has had that opportunity during work session and a budget hearing. At this time, Dr. Albert, do you have any further information for the board with regards to the budget?
No, we have no further comment with regard to the budget that's presented this evening.
Great. Do I have a motion in a second to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget? So the motion was made by Mr. Frost, seconded by Mr. Kavanaugh. At this time, board members, are there any questions? Okay, seeing no further questions or comments, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of approving the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget passes. Moving on to six point oh two, literacy PD RFP approval. Dr. Albert.
All right. Thank you once again, Ms. Andrews. I want to turn it over to Dr. Painter to briefly describe the the action item that we brought for recommendation for approval this evening. Dr. Painter.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate your time for this important topic. You may well, well, you probably will remember that the board approved a posting for an RFP for Literacy Professional Development Services at a board meeting on May tenth. The request, which is essential for our comprehensive literacy plan, included one hundred and seventy-five days of site-based coaching and consulting for the upcoming school year, which equates to thirty-five days with teachers and principals at each of our five elementary schools. The request also includes up to eight days of district-level training for our teachers, likely to be used on half-days or in the summer. Coaching work will support our teachers and our principals on a range of literacy practices focused specifically on the acceleration of student learning after our recent disruptions to education. It's important to note that coaching will not be resource-dependent, although our efforts will support our teachers' effective use of our instructional time and our district-adopted materials. Work will be aligned with Missouri Learning Standards in English Language Arts and will strengthen our work on the five components of reading that are outlined in the National Reading Report Panel Panel Report from two thousand, which are phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. Four vendors submitted proposals with eleven of our individuals in our district scoring each of the four proposals. Our raiders included two teachers, two principals, two assistant principals, our district ELA facilitator district level administrators. And the group included Dr. Sean Members Phillips, our district's Executive Director for Equity Inclusion, Diversity Equity and Inclusion. And she scored the proposals with an eye toward educational equity and meeting the needs of all learners. Two of the vendors actually separated themselves with the literacy link ultimately selected as the preferred vendor of these services. Local references for the literacy link have affirmed their good work and we're excited about working with them. All of our K-five teachers and principals will be expected to engage in coaching and consulting work with the vendor. The effectiveness of the of this endeavor as part of our three-year comprehensive literacy plan will be measured via teacher engagement in the coaching process, fidelity in our use of resources and instructional practices, and student literacy outcomes on our benchmark assessments. Approval of the contract with the literacy link is recommended.
Thank you, Dr. Painter. Do I have a a motion and a second to approve the literacy PD services? So the motion was made by Mr. Frost, seconded by Mr. Kavanaugh. Board members, at this time, are there any questions? Ms. Shern.
Thank you, Mr. Painter. So just to be clear, this is for one year, right?
Correct. This is a one-year. We we do expect that we'll be continuing this after this year, but this, we just did a one-year contract because we wanted to make sure that it was meeting the needs of our teachers and our students.
Now, is there any way, because I I do think it's very important that we have literacy coaches for our teachers to support that that the teachers could receive training to become literacy coaches in our district so that we can sustain the work versus outsourcing past the one year.
You know, I think that's a great question. I I do think that this this work, my personal opinion is this work will be a really good first step toward us potentially having literacy coaches in all of our schools. I also recognize that that's a staffing issue as well, and it it does come with some cost. And so that is something that is certainly on our radar. It probably would have to be something that came through our strategic planning process. And and we expect that, you know, if we if we see good results this year, that certainly helps in our process. But I I'm also aware that we have a literacy coach that's that's starting at Robinson this year. We actually met with her this today to talk about how her work might work in conjunction with the work of of the vendor and and what the next types steps might be toward growing her work potentially at Robinson and hopefully down the road, potentially at other schools as well. Not her work at other schools, but other people's work, yes.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the literacy PD services, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed? Motion to approve the literacy PD services passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Painter. Okay, six point oh three, approval of MSBA policies. ACIB, A C E H B, G B E A, and I G A E B. This is the second reading on all of these policies. They have been discussed at board works, work sessions and meetings. Dr. Albert, do you have any further information that you need to give the board on these topics?
The only thing I want to clarify is in Ms. Malloy's report that she gave earlier, she indicated that there would be further changes to ACA that were being brought this evening. That's incorrect. She was referring to AC being finalized this evening. So I want to make sure there's no confusion among the board members about that. And then again, I apologize to the board. Last last month, what the information that Ms. Bernardi gave you was accurate, but what we had posted on our to the website was not the most up-to-date. This is the correct, most up-to-date version. Again, that was the version that Ms. Bernardi described to the board a month ago, so that's what's included. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in a second to approve the following policies? ACIB, A C E H B, G B E A, and I G A E B. Okay, Mr. Kavanaugh and Mr. Frost, okay. At this time, board members, are there any further questions? Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll go for a vote. All those in favor of approving the following policies. ACIB, A C E H B, G B E A, and I G A E B. Please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed? Motion to approve the policies passes. Okay, moving on to six point oh four, approval of North Kirkwood Middle School easement. We've heard this item under the superintendent report. Dr. Albert, do you have any further information?
No, I do not.
Okay, seeing no further information. Do I have a motion in a second to approve the North Kirkwood Middle School easement?
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Frost made the motion, Ms. DeRoyco second. Are there any questions, board members? Okay, seeing no further questions, we will not move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the North Middle School easement, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed? Motion to approve North Kirkwood Middle School easement project passes. Okay, this brings us to future events. Correct? Okay, future events. Let's go through that. On seven five, the district is closed for Fourth of July. Seven twelve is our regular board meeting at seven P M. Seven twenty-sixth is a board work session at five P M. Oh, okay, so that's actually, I'm sorry.
The information we've given you, I do believe that's flipped. I do believe the work session should be on twelve at five P M.
Okay, so there are
Regular work, the regular board meeting should be on twenty-sixth. We'll amend that.
Okay, so just so that we amend that. So I'm going to repeat it. On seven twelve is the work session, and that is at five P M. And then on seven twenty-sixth is the board meeting, and that is at seven P M. Okay, and then on eight sixteen, we have another board work session at five P M. And then on Tuesday, eight seventeen is our district-wide opening day at eight A M. And then on eight thirty, we have a regular board meeting at seven A M. Again, I'm sorry. I got, I lost my mind. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. There is any proposed session? Do I have a motion in a second to go into closed session?
Second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Frost and seconded by Ms. Pangborn. And we will go to vote by roll call on this. So Ms. Bernardi.
Yes.
Mr. Boyko.
Yes.
Mr. Frost.
Yes.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Ms. Pangborn.
Yes.
Ms. Shern.
Yes.
And myself, yes. I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you so much. Have a have a good evening.